... roll call.
Commissioner Waymire?
Here.
Vice Chair Renode?
Here.
Chair Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Harris? Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
If you'd all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Reverend Larry Carrier.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Our Father, we have just confessed with our mouth that we are under You. You are Lord of the universe. Somehow, you have guided this nation up to this point. We thank You for Your grace and mercy. Thank You for this body of people who have given themselves to serve the community. We pray to give clarity of thought, graciousness, the ability to communicate for whatever business is to transpire. We thank You for Your presence here. Bless each person, and may whatever is decided and may be for the good of the community and for Your honor and glory. We thank You that we can come to You and ask for Your mercies, depend upon You for Your help. We thank You in our wonderful Savior's name, Jesus Christ. Amen. Morning, Cleon. Takes us to Correspondence and Organizational Business. John?
Yes, sir. Any items that were discussed at the study session, since they've been previously discussed, have been put on the consent agenda. If any commissioner would like those to be moved off the consent agenda for discussion, we can do that.
No one has signed up for public comment? That takes us to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda today that need considered and approved are the Franklin County Minus for the June 8th, 2016 Commission meeting and the Commission Study Session for June 13th, 2016. To consider and approve claim vouchers in the amount of $656,854.78 and tax change orders in the amount of a minus $442.16. Item three on the consent agenda is the approval of the Amendment to Agreement on the Juvenile Justice Comprehensive Plan State Block Grant from the Kansas Department of Corrections. Also, item four is the approval of the purchase of a 2015 329E John Deere Skidloader from Murphy Tractor and Equipment in the amount of $57,287. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, Jim.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
It takes us to items of business. The first item of business is the recognition of Charlotte Jones for her 39 years of service in public works. And I want to present her a plaque.
I want to possess you this plaque, Charlotte, for your years of service. Basically, it says, "An appreciation and recognition of dedicated service to Franklin County, Kansas." Your name and your years of service, then it has the board members.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you, and wish you the best on your retirement, being someone that has retired. I know you're going to enjoy it.
I'm sure.
Commissioner Howard, I was, yesterday, I was pulling up and with Jim Hague, we were pulling up and we were, and Charlotte was walking across the parking lot, and we both kind of commented about, she just looks so relaxed, like she doesn't have a care in the world, and she just kind of walked across very leisurely across the parking lot.
The Friday thing's not a surprise, is it?
What's that?
The Friday. And we're, go ahead with that. Where's that at?
Friday, we're going to have a small reception for.
And that will be held at?
The, in the Administration Office.
Administration Office, okay, so everyone's welcome to that. Okay, item number two will be receive a presentation from Prairie Paws Animal Shelter. Melissa.
Good morning. Thank you so much for the opportunity to give you an update on what Prairie Paws has been doing in the first five months. Very exciting times, and just want to say special thank you for your continued partnership and commitment to the animals in our community. We definitely appreciate the funding, and just wanted to say thank you. Year-to-date statistics, we have taken in 388 animals so far year-to-date. Franklin County is making up 18% of that. We've had 261 adoptions. Our live release rate is at 96%. This is a drop from last quarter. We were at 98%. We did have an animal abuse case that came in that had some euthanasias associated with that, and that is why our live release rate numbers dropped there. Our TNR efforts, we prevented 432 kittens from being born through our TNR efforts in the city of Ottawa, continuing to expand that. We estimate right now that there's about 2,100 free-roaming and feral cats in the community, and we're trying to address that. Our 26 financials, our revenue for January through June was $225,840. Fundraising was $122,000 of that. Our program revenue, including adoptions, microchips, and grooming, equaled about $41,000. Our total expenses for the year were $251,000. And overall, to date, we have a cash operating loss of $32,000. You'll probably remember as I was doing my presentation on funding, our cash flow, summer months are very difficult for the shelter. We have a first quarter that we have fundraising and the last quarter, and so we knew that we were going to have a difficult summer month, so we're getting ready to gear up, and our next presentation should not show a loss. To kind of go over that per category, we're $20,000 in our fundraising year-to-date from where we should be to our budget. Gifting kinds are right on target. Foundations, trusts, and grants, we're about $12,000 behind where we need to be year-to-date. We have currently, right now, $45,000 in outstanding grant requests out, so I'm not worried about this number whatsoever. We're just waiting for approval on a couple of those, so I'm definitely positive that we'll hit our goal there. Government support, we're over about $1,000. Adoption revenue, you'll see here, we're about off $10,000. If you recall, we based our 2016 budget based upon our 2015 trends. We didn't have a lot of trend data when I started at the organization as far as why we were hitting higher numbers in certain months. We've started tracking that, but we projected our 2016 budget for January and February off of 2015 numbers. We now see that January and February is not going to continue on that trend of having those high adoption numbers, and so we're compensating and trying to figure out some different marketing opportunities to help raise those adoptions during that month, but that is where that $10,000 comes from. So we're regrouping right now, getting ready to do some adoption specials. Right now, we have a $10 cat special, any cat, kitten is $10, so we're trying to help increase that revenue, and going to do some different marketing opportunities to try to make that up in the remaining year. Microchip revenue, we're over about $500. You'll see grooming, this is one of the businesses, if you recall, that we established to help try to support the adoption revenue. We've exceeded our budget so far year-to-date by $4,500, and I see that continuing to grow. Kelsey's doing a great job, and right now, she's about at half-capacity for her clientele, so we're really excited about this. Drop-off contributions, we're over just a little bit. Training, over a little bit there. Cremations, we're under about $500. Again, that's a trend, we'll see that maybe pick up later in the year. Our reclaim fees are down a little bit. We have established a waiver, if citizens can't afford a drop-off fee, we do have a waiver for financial assistance, and so we've implemented that year, that this year, because we saw a lot of citizens coming in that couldn't afford the drop-off fees, and we didn't want that to prevent them from giving the animal to us. So we do have a waiver, and they do have to explain why they need the financial assistance, and then we try to get a donor to help cover those reclaim fees so that we're not out that. Retail, we're behind just a little bit there, about $1,000 behind. As the summer months are picking up, we'll start selling our flea and tick prevention, so I see that catching up very quickly. Our dog licenses are out, under about $400 year-to-date, so we're pretty much on target with that as well. One of the things you'll see here is we're over in our payroll, and I'll go into that in a little bit more detail here in a minute. We've added a couple of staffing positions, and then as well, have had some staffing changes there that have had me kind of have to add staff, move staff. As our intake fluctuates and we get more, what we're trying to do right now is establish a schedule and a staffing model that'll allow us to staff as our population influxes. So currently, right now, the shelter, we're at capacity, so I need more staff than if we're running at half-capacity. And so we're working on a staffing model to be able to help address this, but I'll talk about this in a little bit more detail. Our personnel, we're under there. Non-personnel, we're right on target. Ockety-tacy, that's, I'm sorry, that's supposed to be 30,000, not 130,000, so we're right on budget, right there. Animal expenses, we're under there. That's due to our in-kind savings that we've been able to get in our medical supplies and our in-kind services. We've been able to partner with several vets in the KC Metro area to get services at discounted cost or at free cost for us. Our fundraising expenses, we're over just a little bit there, and net total, you'll see, we are about $20,000 where we should be there. So our 2016 accomplishments, we were able and fortunate enough to secure funding to purchase two surgery tables, a light, and warming blankets. What this will do for our shelter is allow us, Kansas State University offered up us a vet student that had graduated that's going to do a paid internship. They will come down to our shelter one day a week and perform spay and neuters on top of the weekly rotation that Kansas State University does. What this will allow us to do is really help target that feral cat population and hit it quicker than what we're doing. Currently, right now, we backfill our shelter spay and neuter surgeries with the feral cats, and so we're not able to do as many surgeries as we want. This will also allow us to do any cat surgeries in-house. This is our stepping stone to be able to have a low-cost spay-neuter clinic in our area to be able to provide that. So this is the very basic equipment, we'll add on to that, and my goal is by 2017, 2018, to have a low-cost option in the community for spay and neuter services, and this is kind of our stepping stone to that. I was talking about the payroll being a little bit higher. One of the challenges that we faced in this last quarter is, we've done a great job at growing our fundraising, but we're at a point that we can't grow it any farther. Currently at the organization, I am the fundraiser, and we've kind of gotten at capacity. I can't cultivate any more new donors because I don't have the time to continue those relationships. And so, talking with our board of directors and where we needed to go and where we need to get to, we decided that we needed to hire somebody that specifically is a vet-focused in helping with our corporate giving. And so we promoted Julie Thornton to our Development Associate. She is in charge of all of our special events. That allows me to shift over to work more on our government funding from different counties, along with our major gift donors and our endowment and our estate planning. We need to start building those programs, and that will allow me to do that. And since March 1st, as you recall, last time I told you that we had hired a new volunteer coordinator, she has been doing tremendous work, and we've seen a very huge increase in our volunteer base. She also does outreach educational programs, and since March 1st, she's done 57 outreach programs. So that's to schools, to churches, to nursing homes, helping to educate, enrichment. She does a lot of Alzheimer's groups to help with therapy. So we're really excited that we've been able to make even a bigger outreach since she's joined the team. And just to kind of conclude, we, I wanted to talk to you about our 2016 events that we have going on. Our Run for Bin Motorcycle Run is Saturday, August 13th. We are this year, we are fortunate enough to have a 1977 Honda Goldwing donated to us, so we will be raffling that off this year to help raise funds. So we're really, really excited about that. The drawing will be at the Eagles after the run. And then our next major fundraiser is Saturday, October 8th, is our Bow-Miao Event. This is our 10th annual event. We are really changing this event up this year, really doing it different. It's going to be a dinner and a silent auction, but really strategically planning this event to help raise revenue with this. Looking at our silent auction items, we have a fundraising consultant that's in helping Julie really take this event to another level, so we're really, really excited about that. And then I'll take any questions if you guys have any?
How'd your event go Saturday?
It went really, really well. It was hot, definitely, definitely hot, and I think that last year, we had about 300, 350. This year, I averaged about 200. We went through 100 pounds of ice with our snow cones, so that was definitely popular. We raised about $11,500. Our goal was $12,500, so I'm really, really excited about that. We went from about a $700 event to $5,500, to $6,500, now to $11,500. So I'm really, really happy with the way that we've increased that event, definitely a lot of new sponsors, and I think everybody in the community enjoyed it.
Melissa, when you sell dog licenses, are they only for one year, or can you buy multiple years?
You can, we only do one year. They're printed for a one-year period. That's the way the ordinance is set up with the city of Ottawa, but you renew those at the beginning of every year, and I think it's from January to February 14th.
Okay, we'll appreciate a very good presentation, as always, and appreciate the job you're doing out there.
Thank you guys so much.
We'll be visiting with you in a couple days.
Negative $32,000, is that a good number?
No, definitely not. And, you know, we knew it was going to hit, and we knew that our cash flow, we've been right on track with our cash flow. The adoption revenue hurt a little bit, the $10,000, but we knew the summer months were going to be tough for us and difficult. We're definitely addressing that, and I'm coming up, we're going to move our match campaign up to help with that, looking at additional revenue, but this is a perfect reason why we need that Development Associate position, to help grow and raise more funds, as well as, we're still looking at different businesses to establish. We've got three different business plans in the works right now, looking at the market, trying to figure out what the community needs and how we can step up to help with that. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Third item would be to receive Rans Memorial Hospital Quarterly Update. Matthew. Oh, it's not Matthew.
I know it says Matt Heine, but we're going to switch it up, use the time on the agenda. We appreciate you giving the hospital a few minutes on the agenda, and want to do something a little different this month. I'm Wayne Duterstadt, Chairman of the Trustees at Rans Memorial Hospital. The reason for my visit here today is because we've got three term trustees whose term are going to end this year. Keith Gaddard's term ends 1st of July, and then we've got John Cohen and Ken Frank, Dr. Frank, whose terms end in October. So as you go about the reappointment or appointment process, I wanted to give you just a few minutes of board perspective on what's going on at the hospital, and hopefully that'll help you in your decision. Good times at the hospital, and I know Commissioner Waymire joins us at every meeting, hardly ever misses. We appreciate his attention to the board, and we have a very strong board in place right now. I hope he'd agree with that. Maybe he thinks it's because he attends every meeting that we have a strong board, but I would tell you it's because we have strong board members. Every member on the board to a member is very engaged in the board, very proud of what's going on at the hospital, and would do anything that they could to advance the mission of the hospital. So it's a, it's a good group of people. We've got a lot to be proud of, and right now, Matt is about ready to start his third year in Ottawa. We feel like we hit a home run when we got Matt as CEO at the hospital. He's doing a great job. Of course, one of the first things he did was put a great administrative team in place, so we've got good leadership out there administratively. We've got good partners offering services to the community that we're very proud of. We were just recognized last month as one of the top community hospitals, rural community hospitals in the country. Big honor. We feel it's very well-deserved, and I know you're aware of the fact that the hospital is just starting a $7 million capital project to redo our emergency department. And we're doing that with no debt. I know you hear that all the time, but we're very proud of that, and I think it's important that you know that in these times, there are financial challenges for every hospital, especially the small community hospitals, and be able to do a project like that, continue to improve the facilities with no debt is a very positive thing. We do have challenges, and I would like you to know that as we expand services, hopefully that will expand use of the hospital, increase our revenue. That's what we're trying to do, that's our biggest strategic plan item, but as we do that, we do have to be aware that we have limited resources, limited revenues, and we are in need of balancing our expenses to those revenues as we engage in that capital project, maintain our cash position to be able to do that without debt. Our operating results through April generated an operating loss of $800,000, so that's not acceptable. We are working on that, and we feel we've got the right people to work on that challenge, which is the real reason I want to present to you a letter from Keith Gaddard, whose term, as I mentioned earlier, is expiring July 1st. Keith is willing to serve another term, be reappointed. We've got a letter from him that my lovely assistant will pass out while I finish my presentation. It's not a very exciting letter, he is a CPA, so. I would tell you what he didn't say in his letter is, he is our longest-serving board member, and he is fully engaged. He's Chair of our Finance Committee, and understands probably better than any other board member the ins and outs of the hospital revenues and expenses, and does a great job monitoring the financial condition of the hospital. As we normally do, when we have an opening on the board, we make a suggestion. It's not up to us to appoint people, that's your job, we realize that, but we would like for you, because of Keith's strengths and because of our challenges through this period of doing the capital project and managing our expenses, we think he's got some great skills to help us through that, so we'd like for you to consider reappointing him one last term. He has told us that he would not go for another term after this. So that is our recommendation, and like I say, we're getting ready to, in the fall, we'd like to do a strategic planning session with the board. One of the things we'll do at that session is consider bylaw changes that would limit terms on the board, so it's not our desire to have a board that's static, but in this case, we think it's important to keep Keith around for one more term.
But there's a term, Wayne.
Four-year term.
Four-year terms.
Any questions?
What about the other trustees that are?
I haven't spoken to them to know if they want to be considered for reappointment. Like I say, their terms come up in October, and we haven't had that discussion yet. They're strong. We feel like you guys have done a great job appointing board members, so we'd be happy to keep them. The board just works great together. I wish, anytime you have a chance, you should come to a board meeting. It's fun to be on that board, everyone feels that way.
How many are on the board?
I'll give you the board members, John Cohen, Diane Drake, myself, Ken Frank, Keith Gaddard, Phil Gibson, and Janet Peters. Questions?
Keith touches on something, I guess it's, we've, it's been important to this board in the past, is for other boards that we partner with in the community to consider both term limits and, I guess, board size has been another thing that I guess has made maybe less than ideal, or has hindered some boards in the community, but in this case, term limits. And we've usually talked to our community partners whenever they come about, or at least ask if they've considered term limits, if they have them in their bylaws, and, but he makes some good points about how maybe getting through this project would be a better time afterwards to start considering things like that.
Thank you, Wayne. Do you have anything you need to add, Mather? You good? Okay. With that, I'll take us to item number four, consideration of signing a county disaster declaration for flooding that occurred May 21st through the 31st of 2016. Thomas.
Good morning. We, the state did a preliminary damage assessment, and they've met their, basically, it's $4 million thresholds, what we look for for public assistance. Our county had close to $420,000, tack another probably $20,000 off the city of Ottawa, so we're looking at $440,000 in damage that's going to be eligible for PA assistance, public assistance. And I get acronym-heavy, so if I say an acronym and you guys don't know it, raise your hand, send up smoke flare or something, I'll try to. On this, on this program, we can recover 75% of our costs, you'll get another 10% back from the state of Kansas, so we can recoup up to 85% of our costs. Part of that is, is we have to have a disaster declaration that says, hey, we've exhausted our means to pay for these things, and the part of that is, is that threshold for $92,000 is which we have to hit. One of the things that I like to make everybody note of is that if this is a single event in our county, we're on the hook for $4 million. So, so when we're doing these things and stuff like that, if it's an event that happens only in Franklin County, we have to come up with $4 million of public uninsured damage in order to meet that threshold. So that's always one of those things I like to keep in back of your mind when we're talking about things and going through stuff, because they say, well, where's FEMA at? Well, these are the limits that we've got to hit. Our threshold's $92,000, we can normally meet that very easily. The state's threshold's, which is much higher, is at $4 million. So, with that said, I need you guys' approval to, and I need your signature on that.
I have one question, that, that dyke damage there in the city of Ottawa, would that be included in this?
Well, that's, that's a great question, because Alan and I have had that discussion, and we've asked the city of Ottawa about that, and they said that it's on the Corps of Engineers to repair that, and from what Alan knows is that that is not true, that it's on the city. So we're going to have to get with the city of Ottawa and have that discussion with them, and make sure they know, because that, that damage would be eligible if it's not. If it is, the Corps is not going to cover that.
I'd say that'd be over $30,000.
That's what I said, that's what I called them, I actually asked them that specific question.
Do we need a motion to do this, John? Okay, any more questions on this?
When you brought up the $4 million local damage, you're referring to like Redding tornado a few years ago, which was an event just in, that made Lyon County?
Yep, Redding, Baxter Springs, they also got hit, they didn't get anything. And I always like to talk about, some, this is some of the issues that I have with FEMA, is that they don't do anything regionally. So in the southeast corner of the state, the Joplin tornado that went through, it hit Oklahoma, it hit Kansas, and then it hit Joplin. Oklahoma and Kansas did not make their thresholds for the state, so I've always said that they've need to, they've always need to revamp that, and I've always kind of fought with FEMA over those issues, because, you know, it's not fair for somebody to get it just across a straight line, whereas other people have got that damage.
Okay, I would look for a motion, declaration for the flooding from May 21st through May 31st in 2016. So move. Have motions or a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, Jim.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
I'll get that signed for you.
Okay.
Okay, item five, approval of final platform Marx Farm Addition subdivision located on the south side of Marshall Road between Idaho Terrace and Indiana Road. Larry.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. At their last meeting, the Planning Commission considered and approved. At their last meeting, the planning commission considered and approved the subdivision plat for the Marx Farm Addition. This is a two-lot subdivision. The reason for this being submitted as a subdivision rather than a lot split is that the county subdivision regulations allow only one-time use of the lot split. Any further divisions of the property would require then a subdivision plat. The planning commission, at their hearing, did find that it did satisfy all the criteria for zoning and subdivision regulations, and therefore approved this. This matters on your agenda this morning for you to accept any roads or easements that are shown on the face of the plat.
Okay. Cut and dry. Any questions for Larry on this?
People do these lot splits, Larry? Do they have to prove there's water there or anything like that?
At the time they do the lot split, they have to do that. But again, in this situation, we did have a letter on file for the creation of the additional lot that indicates that the Rural Water District Board does have the capabilities to serve it. All they have to do is come up with $7,000 for the meter.
If not, we'll look for a motion to approve the final plat for Marx Farm Addition subdivision located on the south side of Marshall Road between Idaho Terrace and Indiana Road.
Motion to approve this?
Are motions or a second?
Second.
Motion is a second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay. for fiscal year 2016, ending December 31st, 2016.
Commissioners, I have attached a management summary about concerns and discussion about services, about auditing services and engaging in a contract with them. I've went over kind of some of the concerns that I had, just to make you aware of what we need to take into consideration. So with all of that being said, hopefully you've read that. Essentially, the county clerk and I have discussed the services from Schlotterbeck and Burns. Sorry, I misspelled it there. Sorry, Rodney. And at this time, we are satisfied with those services, that he does a good job. He knows our organization. And as you kind of saw in my management summary, is that there's two sides, two lines of thinking on this. With that being said, we are fine. It's our recommendation to go ahead and engage them for another year. But again, that's your determination if you want to do that. If it is the desire to move towards someone else, to a different firm for the next round, starting that audit of 2017 finances, and that'll take place in the spring of 2018, if there is interest in doing that, we would need to start the RFP process now. And I kind of outlined what that would be, the expected timeline to put the RFQ together to do that. The issue is, is that we do, it's not just an audit and then we're done with the accountant. Is that the accountant provides us advice, operational advice, and different things throughout the year. So if we didn't have Schlotterbeck and Burns going forward from now to we got somebody, we'd have to engage them in a cost per call, basically, whenever we needed them, or try to get somebody on board to do that as quickly as possible. So if we want to move towards somebody for the 2017 audit that takes place in the spring of 2018, we would just need to start now. And then we'd have Rodney throughout this next coming year. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
My first question is, how does this cost compare to last year's cost?
I actually, Janet and I went back and took a look at the last time we had other auditing firms provide these services to us. And what Schlotterbeck and Burns is providing to us now is the cost that we were paying six, seven years ago with a different firm. So that cost was here six and seven years ago with a different firm. They're right at the same cost now. Considering inflation and stuff, we feel that's a true value and a cost savings for the county.
And then how many years have we've had this company?
Since, I believe, 2010. Rodney, does that sound right?
We have had other audit firms do our audit, as John said. And I was speaking with Debbie Huff yesterday about it, and the amount of staff time that it takes to engage with those audit firms is substantial. That's a huge concern for Debbie Huff. Like, she said, when we've had other audit firms and come in and do it, it basically takes one person out of her office, away from their job the entire time the audit firm is there to provide them with other information. And so that person's job is not getting done, or other people are scrambling to do it while the audit's going on. And, you know, Rodney's familiar with various different computer systems, not just ours, but with CIC that a lot of other people use. And just his knowledge of county government, Debbie and I feel is very valuable. I know a huge concern is, you know, a personal relationship, and I, and none of us feel like there's a personal relationship with this audit firm. It's purely a working relationship that we can ask questions and he can come here and professionally perform the audit for us.
I don't think it's a question of whether we're happy with the job they're doing. I think it's, no doubt, we're happy with the job that's been done. And I would think the price is reasonable and that the price isn't the issue. The issue that was brought up is just a perception of using the same auditor year after year after year. It was what was brought up and talked about on this.
Not generally considered the best accounting practice, but, you know, it's kind of old adage, is seven years experience, or is it one year of experience seven times? Well, it's equality, and I guess is what we're really looking for of auditing. And I guess Janet and John are probably the most familiar with our finances, what Rodney does, how Rodney does it. And I guess if they've looked critically at it and decided that's, or recommended that's, it's best to keep going with Rodney forward, then I'm happy, just as long as we do take that look every so often.
And that's why I tried to outline, like I said, the two lines of thinking on that. And I think there's validity, and there's good and bad to both of that.
I remember using other accounting firms, and we'll be much happier with Rodney. I can probably tell you that, but at least...
We are kind of a specialized area. I mean, it's not like, you know, a corporation or a small business or whatever. We're county government, and we're getting tax revenue. And I think that that's just a different...
We collect tax revenue that's not even ours.
Yeah, absolutely.
A lot of different people.
Distributed to other people, and yeah, it's just a different line of thinking than a lot of people are used to.
By the way, this reads, John, shows for just retaining them for 2016. Is that all the motion we want for just the 2016 one here? Okay. Okay. Any more questions? If not, we'll look for a motion of retaining Schlotterbeck and Burns for auditing services for the fiscal year 2016, ending December 21st, 2016. Got a motion as a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, Janet?
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard, I have those, the letters. Or do you have?
I can do.
Yeah. I have the letters back in my office.
I have one right here. Do you want us to sign it, and then you take...
I had two that I already signed. A few left that was here. I can sign that this one.
Right. That'll be fine.
Okay. Thanks for the job you've been doing for us.
I appreciate working with you.
Okay. With that, we'll go to staff reports.
First of all, just a reminder that we do have the luncheon today. We are hosting, so it'll be here. The budget study sessions start at 8:30 in the morning. I will probably have coffee and doughnuts for the commissioners to get us kicked off. The RFP for tourism and promotion, just an update on that, is that I've put a committee together. I've asked different people from around the county to assist with that. Right now, there is myself. I'll be chairing that. The county clerk and Janet will be assisting with that. The city clerk from Wellsville will be sitting on that with us. Marie Seneca, the mayor of Pomona, she will be sitting on that. John Horn, mayor of Williamsburg, will be sitting on that. And then Scott Byrd from the city of Ottawa will be also sitting on that. So I tried to get a good cross-section from across the county of ladies and guys to help me with that, to review all of those. Again, the...
When's the deadline for that, Dan?
28th.
This month?
Yep. Deadline for those is on the 28th. And we have received one round of questions. We received those questions, and then we responded to them. We've received some more, and those will be coming, we'll be posting those responses, I believe, by the 20th for the next round, second round of questions that we received. So, and that's all I have right now.
Sure. Anything for us?
This past weekend, we had Jay Hocker Days down in Williamsburg. The weekend before that, we had the Optimists Kids Day Duck Race down at City Park here in Ottawa. So we're really in the middle of our fair and event season, so we're staying busy with that and getting out into the public and getting our feedback and answering questions and just kind of being there for people. And it's been fun. We went without really, there were no problems down in Williamsburg, and we anticipate the same thing for the rest of our fairs that we have going throughout the county. But it's that time of year, so we'll be out doing that. If anybody has any questions for me, I'll answer them.
I think so. How's everything to jail? Numbers up, down?
They're just, they're pretty steady.
About the same?
Yep. They're pretty same. About the same. We've had some, because it's been a lot hotter, I think that helps fuel some of the problems that we have in there and...
I thought it brought some extras in for the air conditioning.
Yeah. So it's kind of, you know, we've had a few incidents that have happened in there, but that happens in any county jail, so...
But we have no one farmed out.
That's correct.
Okay. Philip, you got anything? That's good to think. Also, you didn't get a chance to talk. Do you have anything from your department? Okay. Jim?
I was notified earlier this week by Vance Brothers that they intend to be here and complete the ceiling project beginning the end of next week.
Good. Good.
The, all of the personal property real estate rules have been turned over by Philip to me, and so they are all brought into our system, and they've all been verified. The only thing I'm waiting to finalize values for July 1st value date is the state assessed utilities, which I'm expecting that today. So hopefully, by early next week, we'll have those values ready, and John can get those put in the county budget. So you guys can take a look at that. And of course, with that comes all of the budget meetings for all of the smaller districts that Julie and I prepare in my office for cemeteries and fire districts and townships. We'll be doing all of those, the 7th and 8th of July, I believe are our scheduled dates for that. So on an election note, our first small group of ballots will go out on Friday, and we have three ballots for overseas military people that will have to be out to them by Saturday. And next week, we'll have our programmer here to program all of the ballots for everyone else, and we'll be gearing up to get those ready for early voting in mid-July. So...
That's good. Okay. Takes us to commissioner comments, board reports. Roy, you want to start?
Yeah. I was unable to go to the chamber meeting yesterday, but I just want to say there's a coffee for Mid-American Nutrition Friday at 8 o'clock, and Swan Art Festival is this weekend. I haven't attended anything since last...
Monday night, I went to the city council meeting in Lane. One of the projects, they realized that they had worked on their street addresses, which have been a problem for EMS and some others. And apparently, they did some of that in 2007, but it never did get finalized. So they are going to try to be doing that this next month. And I told them to get with Larry and appraisers on what do we need to do to get those addresses cleaned up down there. Apparently, at one time, there's been two or three different towns there, so getting that straightened out will be a major accomplishment for them. And then on, yesterday, I attended the Wellsville Chamber of Commerce meeting. They're working on adjusting their bylaws and going through them and making changes and positions and adding people to the board of directors by some at-large things. Their golf tournament is this coming weekend at Oswatomi, a four-person scramble. And they are going to consider moving their, they've always met on the second Tuesday at 11:30, and now they're thinking of going to a morning meeting, and so it was beginning in August. The August meeting will be a 7:00 AM meeting on the second Tuesday to see if that will increase membership attendance at their meetings. That's pretty much it.
Okay. I also have not attended anything since our last meeting. With that, we enter into executive session for personnel matter for 10 minutes. I assume this is going to be with the administrator and the commission?
Yes, and I'm going to ask for 20 minutes.
20 minutes?
And this will be with the administrator and the county appraiser as needed by the administrators, by the commissioners.
Okay. We'll look for a motion to enter an executive session for personnel matter with the administrator, the appraiser for 20, and the commission for 20 minutes. Have a motion? So move. Have a motion as a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
And we will be going in at 9:18. We're back out of executive session, 9:36, no action taken. With that, if no one has anything else, we'd look for a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned.